Okay, looks like we're on the air. If we could resume. All right, now we have to start with number 19?
No, I'd like to make an amendment, if I could, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
To the amendment that was just voted on. And that would be to cut the Assistant Director of Administration funding of $104,107.
Can you repeat that, John?
Yeah.
Making a motion to-
Can't hear you.
Making a motion to cut the funding on the Assistant Director of Administration in the amount as noted of $104,107.
I'll second that.
Is that- that's not in there, is it?
I know it's part of a cut that was originally agreed upon. Mr. McCain, I absolutely cannot tell what you've done in this. And I'm not kidding. I don't know if anyone at this table can really tell you what's been done here. All I see is-
Mr. McCain, I have no problem understanding it. It's not there.
Are you telling me that that position has still been defunded?
Correct.
All right, well, I need real clarification. But look, I'm not trying to be argumentative here. I've seen this for five minutes. I don't think anybody here really understands-
We already voted, John.
I'm gonna give you amendments all night long, Bill. I want an explanation on what the heck we're voting on here, what was voted on.
Before I leave the table here, I want to make sure that what this council decided two weeks ago is still was being implemented. And I don't think the members at this table-
We didn't decide on anything two weeks ago.
We did.
No, we didn't because I told him, I asked him, say, "Are we voting on this?" And we said, "No." And he said he wanted a consensus. And I said, "Are we gonna do a consensus on everything on a budget?" So we did not vote on it.
I stand corrected. We had a consensus, but we went over every item line by line twice. Twice.
And we did.
And every council member had the-
We did consent.
Yes, but every council member-
No, we didn't because I did not consent on any of it. So we did not consent on it.
If you didn't object-
No, they were saying, "I'm agreeing," because I didn't say anything. When we had a majority and this is what we're looking at.
He asked if there was anybody that wanted to change it. There was no- no one said, "No." I objected to that.
So that didn't mean that we couldn't change it today?
Right, we never saw that list.
Well, explain- well, just explain this to me. Is the Assistant Director of Administration's position in what we just voted on or not? Is it or not?
No, that is not-
Is that cut?
That is not cut.
I'm asking Councilman Davis, is it in there or not?
Hey, they didn't cut it. He read- he read everything that was-
I understand, but I don't- I don't understand whether that was cut or not.
No, we can't help that. Yeah, that's-
It would have been real- it would have been nice, Mr. McCain, if the entire council had had the privilege of this information more than 10 minutes ago.
John, we didn't have to pass out anything. We passed out to try to help.
There's a motion and a second, cutting the position of $104,107 because I don't see in your documentation where that position has been defunded. Are you saying it has been?
I don't see it in here.
Right, it has been- right, it would be funded.
No, I don't want that. I want to defund it.
I'm telling you, right, but I'm telling you, it's funded in what we just approved.
All right, I'm making amendment to defund that.
Mr. Cannon, who had the second?
I did.
Joe. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So, just for clarification, are we trying to basically go down multiple items or multiple in this case?
Which number would that be? Is it listed on here with a number?
It's number two on the document titled Budget Bill 2014-.
Oh, okay, they removed the funding for Assistant Director of Administration.
Correct.
All right, and then you had that amount of what?
Listed as $104,107.
104, 107.
Correct. Well, we'll have to get Social Security later.
Any more discussion?
Voting on the amendment.
All right, we're voting on Mr. Cannon's amendment. Mr. Davis?
No.
Ms. Ackley?
No.
Mr. Hastings?
I'll go, no.
Mr. Holloway?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McCain?
No.
The president votes yes, so it's four to three against. All right, moving on. Mr. Cannon?
Well, Mr. Dodd, I tell you, absolutely, when I tell you I have no idea what this means, I'm not kidding. I don't even know how to begin an amendment because I don't even know what I'm reading here.
Yeah, I know, I thought we were gonna go down this list.
I've never experienced something like this in my life. This is a- All right.
You said we need to start at item 19.
We'll start at item 19, then. Number 19 says, "In the text of legislative bill 2020-04, add the following whereas paragraphs. Whereas page five of the budget document bears a stamped statement signed by someone purporting to be acting as the Director of Finance that certifies unspecified funds, although such certification is neither required for adoption of the budget nor part of the form of the budget as submitted by the county executive within the meaning of section 705 of the Wycomico County Charter. And the council does not regard that stamped statement to have any meaning or effect and does not recognize the signer to be the duly authorized Director of Finance or to be acting in that capacity. The council has denied not to remove or mask the statement because it understands that the county executive has threatened to direct the executive branch to proceed as if the budget that he has submitted was adopted as submitted without such change the council may make. If the council removes or masks the signed statement mentioned above and the council does not want the county government to experience a confusion that such conduct by the county executive was surely caused. And whereas the budget submitted by the county executive proposes certain matters that require specific action by the council other than by its adoption of the budget, including (a) increase in certain fees of use of county landfill that are stated on page 190 of the budget document; (b) change in classification of certain employee, county employee positions for which submission of evaluation thereof to the council and its approval, which are required under the Personnel Manual, adopted pursuant to the Wycomico County Charter. Because that process has not been initiated by the executive branch and therefore cannot be completed by the council prior to the adoption of the budget, such change has not been approved by the council at this time, and thus the budget does not correctly indicate the classification of those positions. And whereas funds appropriated by the budget as hereby adopted or hereafter amended are not appropriated and may not be expended or otherwise used as payment or compensation for legal services or representation by an attorney other than (1) the county attorney appointed by the county executive and confirmed by the county council; (2) an attorney appointed by the county council as its attorney; (3) an attorney employed as special legal counsel for services approved by the county council in accordance with section 507 point F of the Wycomico County Charter; or (4) an attorney employed or retained by an officer or agency that is not part of the executive branch of the county government, including, without limitation, the state's attorney, sheriff, and boards of education, elections, and licensed commissioners. And whereas funds appropriated by the budget as hereby adopted or hereafter amended are not appropriated and may not be expended or otherwise used to compensate or furnish employment benefits for services performed by someone, (1) as a head of department or agency in the executive branch of the county government or in any other position for which the appointment by the county executive is subject to confirmation pursuant to section 315 point A of the Wycomico County Charter, unless before performing the services he or she has been confirmed thereunder after the county election held on November 6, 2018, to serve in the position; or (2) as the acting head of department or agency in the executive branch or as the acting Director of Administration unless he or she is qualified to serve in that capacity and the services were performed during a period that does not exceed 90 days or longer, term approved pursuant to Charter section 414 point B." That was a lot. Any discussion?
In that- in that statement, it referred to our Personnel Manual. Do we have one?
Do we have the Personnel Manual in front of us?
No, do we have one?
Do we have what?
A Personnel Manual.
There is a Personnel Manual.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, the council needs to work on it. Any more discussion? Are we voting on this?
If there's a motion to make the amendment.
Do we have a motion to vote on this?
I'll make a motion to vote on.
You have a motion, you have a second. You got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I have one nay. Chair votes aye. All right. What is the next one, 20?
20.
Yes, on number 20. "In the text of legislative bill 2020-04 and section I, after the initial, all capitals, opening, add, 'Subject of the matters mentioned in the preparatory provisions of this bill that are stated above and incorporated by reference. In the text of legislative bill 2020-04 in section I, second paragraph, insert the word 'adopted' in the sentence, it says, 'General fund, revenue expense budget is attached hereto as adopted Wycomico County, dash, 2021, operating capital budget pages 1 through 276 and budget message and table of contents pages 3 through 14.'" Any discussion?
I mean, it looks like 20 and 21 are basically just housekeeping matters in that correct, Mr. Taylor?
No, more or less.
More or less.
Is there an amendment on the floor? Are you-
Did you say something?
Are you proposing this as a amendment?
Yes. Are you making a motion?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. The number 21. "In the text of legislative bill 2020-04 in section IIIII, strike Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, for the 2021 through 2025, is attached here too. This will be adopted separate from the budget bill, which we did."
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Davis. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. All right. 22.
We actually did that in the-
You did that, okay. 23. "The county council has recommended that the remaining surplus be added to contingency transfer funds, Fund 46, for future appropriation. If the county executive, however, does not agree to the expenditure of the surplus, then in accordance with Charter section 705 dash F, the surplus shall be placed in an undesignated fund balance." Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment from 23?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Was that it, Mr. McCain? I think that was the last.
Well, that's all in our operating portion, but now we gotta move into the capital portion of it.
I'm not sure that we need to do that because of the way the charter reads. I think what we've done earlier on the capital program and the CIP automatically does that. I would kind of-
Is that true?
Like to hear Ms. Hurley's thoughts on that as well, but-
This would be adding text to the legislative bill, and I agree with you that those changes were made to the CIP.
Yeah.
And you did add that whereas, you know, language to the resolution as well for the CIP.
Yeah, that was if they decided not to restore. If you see the bold type in the middle of the page there. And you've restored, so essentially that goes by the boards.
So we don't need to do the rest of this?
No, I don't think so. But I just want to make sure there's not something else in there that Mrs. Hurley has that I've missed. I would, though, just point out that on the matters that are listed in the amendment as to additions, that would be the amounts for the prosecutors and investigators and the state's attorney's office and other matters that are listed totaling $1,33,139. I think all of those matters, if the executive does not agree to them, would then go down into that undesignedated fund balance. And again, that's a charter provision.
Right, that's what the charter is.
So when you read this, it's not as if they're actually being added. They're being added subject to agreement with the county executive. Just a clarification, that's all.
Mr. Taylor, my understanding is that the county executive has agreed for the surplus to be put in contingency. Any surplus?
Well, that could be, but I'm talking about the specific items that are listed as additions. In the amendment that was made and approved totals $1,33,139. I think there's one, two, three, four, five, six, six items. And those are all, I think, subject to agreement by the county executive. Or they won't be additions as the way they're listed.
Correct, yeah.
All right, so we need to vote on these amendments?
No, I think the voting's been done. He was just getting clarification.
So do we have to vote on the resolution itself with the amendments?
You have to vote on the budget bill as amended.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to vote on 2020-04 as amended?
I'll make a motion to vote on Bill 2024 as amended.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call. Ernie?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Joe?
No.
John?
No.
Bill?
Aye.
Chair votes nay. Passes four to three. Thank you, everyone.
So next on the agenda is Resolution Number 37, 2020. This is to levy and impose a property tax for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021, to provide for the payment of a service charge for a property owner under a semi-annual payment schedule, setting the tax rate for real and personal property, and providing for the collection of the property tax. And I don't see Mr. Strasberg here, so-
Is he here? Okay, need a motion to approve Resolution Number 37-2020.
So moved.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Hastings. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Okay. Ms. Hurley?
Next, we actually have Mr. Levin Hitchens, our internal auditor.
Mr. Hitchens, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have a mic tonight at my table. All right, I'll try to make this super quick. I call your attention to Resolution 38, 2020, accepting the internal audit report on the Wycomico County payroll system.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hitchens?
Motion.
I'm sorry?
A motion, I believe it.
Did he make a motion?
Yes.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I'll go ahead.
All in favor?
Do you want me to-
You want to go ahead and talk?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Quick overview of the payroll system. Time entry and timekeeping procedures vary among the departments based on what is best for their particular needs. This includes biometric scanners, computer entry, and written timesheet methods. The payroll process is decentralized, which adds a layer of internal control. Departments with larger budgets have a department-level accountant. The payroll staff that provides final approval and processing has recently moved from Human Resources to the Finance Department. HR is still responsible for employee onboarding and benefits coordination. Wycomico County had a payroll of $33 million in 2019 for over 1,200 employees. Based upon the tests performed, the overall payroll process is satisfactory. For findings, there were a couple of IT permissions concerns that were brought up, and IT did remedy those before I published the report. There was also a rare conflict of payday falling on the same day as a banking holiday. In this case, it was Christmas. Some employees got paid on the 24th, some on the 25th, and some on the 26th. Similar situation is going to occur on Veterans Day this year. I recommend council and administration look into modifying the payday schedule to allow payment on the preceding Tuesday. I'd like to thank HR, IT, and Finance for their cooperations, and I'm happy to answer any questions from council.
All right, any questions? I thought you said you were gonna be quick.
It was quick, sir.
And I just teased you. Any questions?
Watch some Steves.
All right, no questions? All in favor of approving the internal auditor's report? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Hitchens.
Yes, sir.
You're the first person to do that tonight.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Jesse and Lori did this.
All right, now we're gonna move to public comments. And if you would, go to the podium, state your county that you reside in, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes or less, and try not to be redundant.
Good evening, council members. My name is Terry Denton. I sent everybody an email regarding election judge primary, election 2020 compensation. I want to thank Mr. Dodd and Mr. Cannon for letting me know that it was received. I realize everybody's very nervous. Do you want me to read the email, Mr. Dodd, or just summarize?
You summarize it.
Okay.
Because we've got a lot of speakers tonight.
I've been an election judge since 2006. As you all know, everything changed this year, and it came primarily a mail-in election. We are all trained and sworn in at the end of February and early March. We all, a regular judge makes $250, a chief makes $325. Basically, they only needed 50 people at the civic center, and they needed probably 50 people to do scanning and ballot stuff in the office. That's left about 200 people in the lurch here, you know, planning for a $250, $500 paycheck. I am election judge in the town of Willards. A similar situation happened last year, not that we had to go to mail-in voting, but that nobody ran for election. I went to the council because they sent us a letter saying, "We don't need you. You know, you're out of luck of a $150 paycheck." They agreed to pay us $75. They made a new policy. If that happens again, the three of us would be paid 75. I'm asking the council to pay any of us who were not in the election arena at all more than the $30 that you're gonna pay us now, to pay everybody half of our normal rate of pay us $125 for this one election only, because everybody does depend on that. We do do a very hard job. Who knows how the elections are gonna go from now on? I think it would be in good faith to keep us all, you know, in a loop and happy campers, basically.
I do want to point out that I had a conversation with Mr. Gutierrez at the Board of Elections, and he stated that he's gonna forward your comments to the rest of the board members.
Great, great, okay. Thank you very much.
Right, next.
Good evening, council members. My name is Eddie Sims, and I am a resident of Wycomico County. I stand before you today to talk about the letter that was sent in at the last meeting opposing the resolution for a 2A county. There were three issues that the letter had a problem with. The first issue stated that this resolution was racist against minority gun owners. The letter also brought up three instances involving homicides, odd minorities, and police officers. It also stated that white supremacy controlled the gun laws and quoted a Black Panther as saying, "To get rid of the gun, you have to pick up the gun." They finished the issue by saying there is no public outcry to take people's guns. This resolution is not about race, but about supporting the Second Amendment and protecting our rights as citizens. The incidents involving police were not in this state nor this county. These incidents are not 2A resolution issues, but are de-escalation techniques that need to be included in police training. Out of the 34 homicides involving police in our state last year, 10 were gun-related, with all 10 being initiated by criminals. 34 new gun bills have been introduced in the last five months. So yes, the outcry to take our guns is real. The second issue was the language in the resolution as being anti-democratic and contrary to the rule of law. The resolution is not anti-democratic. Instead, it is a tool to impede violations to the Second Amendment. The Constitution is the supreme rule of law, and the State of Maryland's Declaration of Rights, Article 2, states that in saying the state will uphold the Constitution. The third issue stated that all gun owners should have a say in this. Another part of the issue talked about a Zoom meeting involving the Republican Central Committee, a few council members, and Sheriff Mike Lewis, and how only a few could join in to that meeting. The last part of the issue talked about everyone being included so they can safely purchase, own, and learn how to use a firearm. Gun owners are encouraged to speak up. This is how these work sessions are supposed to go. Gun owners are also encouraged to join us in making sure this resolution passes and making this county a sanctuary for the Second Amendment. The meeting was hosted by the Republican Central Committee and did include some council members, the sheriff, and also the Facebook group that I'm involved with. The meeting date was posted on various sites, and anyone could join in. The resolution is not responsible for teaching people how to use, purchase, or own a firearm. That responsibility falls to each citizen. The issues posted last week have nothing to do with this resolution and shouldn't be included in any of the decisions being made regarding this resolution. Council members, thank you for your time, and I encourage you all to pass this resolution.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is David Croft. I'm a 36-year-old voting resident, District 4. I'm a combat veteran, United States Marine Corps, and active firefighter for the last 11 years. I'm writing and coming to you guys for resolution on the Second Amendment, as it is a means to protect my children in these tough current times that we're currently in. I believe that it deters violence, and I believe that as the issue of great earnest as violence against innocent people increases as these crimes are committed, federal law continues to restrict my ability to defend my neighbors from domestic crimes committed against them. I need this county to be a leader in defending my Second Amendment rights and to begin to show leadership that it's gonna take to show that these statistics are gonna be to provide through our Second Amendment. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Croft, and thank you for your service. Next.
Esteemed council members, I am Susan Calhoun, resident of Wycomico County, Maryland. I'm also a veteran of the United States Army. In reference to the Constitution of the United States of America, the Bill of Rights Amendment 2, which states, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms, shall not be infringed." I urge the Wycomico County Council to adopt a sanctuary resolution for the Second Amendment. Why we need this is the current trend of events in government and society indicate it is in peril. We are currently living in a time when laws and fundamental rights are being challenged. We are concerned that our Second Amendment right is being infringed upon by the government, and eventually they will try to remove this right from us altogether. We are concerned about new laws that make it harder to purchase, sell, or trade arms amongst law-abiding citizens. These laws are written under the guise of reducing gun violence. However, this does not affect criminals, only law-abiding citizens. We understand that you personally have taken an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, and many of us have. We are asking for a public stance to retain the sanctity of the Second Amendment and to defend it against any pending or future attacks. We want to state with authority that we, in this community on the eastern shore, will follow the highest law of the land and not the current trend of lawlessness that is prevalent across the nation. We ask the council to adopt the resolution stating that Wycomico County will uphold and preserve the Second Amendment, our right to keep and bear arms, and therefore the right to protect ourselves, our families- right to protect ourselves, our families, neighbors, and our properties. Thank you, council members.
Thank you for your service, Ms. Calhoun. Next.
Good evening, council. My name is Crystal Cooper, and I am a registered voter in District Four of Wycomico County, and I stand before you today as a concerned mother. Ten years ago, a couple of men broke into my house when I was home alone with my two daughters, aged eight and just a few months old at the time. I heard two men come through, at least two men, excuse me, come through the back door of my house while I was rocking my baby in the nursery. The terrifying part is, I thought it was my husband coming home. I had no idea that there would have been any danger until they got upstairs, when it would have been too late. Thankfully, they were scared out the door by my dog barking. So, great, I love my dog, he's a wonderful dog, but the thing is, three steps further in the door, they would have seen my dog was in a crate. We would have been completely defenseless. My husband came home that night. We discussed what had happened, didn't know, was I hearing things? He went through, he searched the house. We notified the police and the property owner. We've been at our residence for 10, almost 11 years now. While we were waiting for police, he searched the home and the yard, where we found at least one of the suspects still waiting in the yard. He was hiding behind a tree. My husband chased him off. He was never found, never identified, so we have no idea who would have come in to threaten our family, okay? So, it's just a situation, but what does that have to do with the Second Amendment? Why does that mean I need a gun? Well, because he was waiting. He knew the situation at my house. If he was waiting to know that we were there, he knew when we weren't there. If he wanted to rob the house, he would have come in when it was empty. He wouldn't have waited for me to be home alone with my two little girls. I would have been completely helpless if he had made it through that door. The police are there, why not just rely on the police? We called the police to have them come in. One of the main reasons this is an issue is my address. I live within the city of Salisbury, but I live on a county street. So, when I call 911, I am immediately routed to Salisbury P D. I go through the questions, then they realize I'm not their jurisdiction, so then I have to be transferred over to county. Sometimes county's not sure which jurisdiction I'm in. This puts a serious delay on any response time when they're coming to my house. And of the numerous calls, I said, we've been at our location for almost 11 years now. We have called many times for trespassers on our property and theft. When we can get an officer to come out, they're helpful, but they don't push the issue. It's not a big deal, it was just somebody on the property. They don't seem to pay attention to the fact that I have young children who may not have adults at the home at the time, okay? And the one time we were able to get to court to try to press charges on somebody who was on the property, the judge shamed the officer for wasting his time with something so petty as a lady trespassing, okay? With a response like this, the cops' hands are tied, they can't even help us, so I've got, I've got to wait for a delayed response? I don't know who's going to come and respond, if it's going to be the right person, or even if they're going to really even be able to help me. So, given this information, I ask you, if something bad happens to my family, who is going to accept responsibility for it? The cops can't be there instantaneously, and I understand that. So, please, I beg you, do not take away my right to protect my life, my family, and my property while I am waiting for backup to arrive, because you're not going to necessarily be able to get there right when we need you. I thank you again for listening to our concerns tonight, and I strongly urge you, please, vote for the resolution to make 2A, Wycomico County a 2A sanctuary.
Thank you very much. I've been reminded that once you've spoken, you're supposed to go back downstairs so we don't conflict with the COVID policy. So, thank you, everyone.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brian Cook. I'm a Wycomico County resident in Councilman Dodd's district. I would first like to thank you all for addressing, taking the time to listen to us. Since February, I know you have been bombarded with emails about statistics and facts, and I'm not going to go much into that because you've heard pretty much everything spun to that direction. But I do want to kind of point, you know, at a situation. Through this, I've heard the quote that passing a resolution like this would somehow shrink democracy. I would beg to differ on this scenario, as this is showing true democracy at work. The people give the power to the government, the government is by the people. So, we've passed on to you guys, our local government, our message on what we want. We've allowed for debate. I've watched, you know, a few of you go back and forth with our sheriff that presented this resolution, and in the spirit of the resolution, we've had multiple council members come through with their opinions, their, you know, on what it should be, shouldn't be. I've heard, you know, why we shouldn't be, why we shouldn't, why we should do, and I respect that. I was raised to respect everybody's opinion, everybody's background, no matter what. But I'm going to leave you with this story. As a kid, you know, much like a lot of you in this room, I've known, you know, Mr. Holloway for every bit of the 35 years of my life. A lot of you have spent time with my grandparents, you know, bless their hearts, they're gone now, but some of the fondest memories I have growing up as a child was being out of range with my grandfather, being down in Powellville at the turkey shoots. Through that, you know, it's tall, gun safety, what happens when you pull that trigger? That's the only thing in life that you can't take back in life. This group, this resolution, does not in any way support any violence, or are we actually endorsing any violence to participate down the street? Comments have been made that we're opening the door for people to walk down the street with a firearm. We're not supporting that. What we are supporting is, we agree with the opposition that I wrote to a letter on the last council meeting, that there should be background checks. We agree with that. Everybody in this room agrees with that. Theoretically, that keeps firearms out of the hands of bad people. So, everybody acts like it's, you know, willy-nilly to go get a firearm. So, I'm going to bridge off Mr. Holloway, who made the comment that, and Ms. Cannon, I'm going to pronounce your name wrong, I always want to say McCain, sorry. You know, he was right in some aspects, that it could take, you know, up to two months to buy a firearm, depending on which firearm you want. If you don't want a ginormous rifle or shotgun rolling around your house, some people can't handle that. That's just a lot of weapon for people for self-defense. A 12-gauge might be too much. So, maybe they want a pistol. If you want a pistol, you're going to be, I don't know, every bit of over $200, $250 out of your pocket if you don't have your HQL permit by then. You've got to be fingerprinted, go through training classes, then you've got to send off to the Maryland State Police and all this wonderful jazz together to try to get your permit, and that's $250 before you can even go out and buy a firearm. So, you want to talk about our government working against us? So, Maryland, you know, much like was said earlier, with the 30-plus gun bills that were produced this year, tried to make it illegal for me to have my daughter at a gun range hold one of my rifles to learn how to shoot a firearm. That's the stuff we're up against. The minority here is the gun owners, the lawful-abiding gun owners. Everybody in this room, including you, Joe, Larry, Nicole, Josh, Mr. Cannon, we're all in the same boat here. We want the same thing, we want what's best for our county. It is in my opinion that this is what's best for our county. Let's send a message to Annapolis, because I personally have been to Annapolis, Mr. Hastings, and I would encourage you to come with us. You were uphill, on an uphill battle in that place. And Mike said it best, they don't listen to us down here. So, a resolution like this would make us number seven in the state of Maryland. Let's get together on the same page, let's move this along, let's go to Annapolis together, so we can love. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Next.
Howdy, neighbors. My name is Jesse Ferguson. I'm a resident of Carroland County. I'm a husband, father of two young girls, and every year, I watch as the rights of Marylanders are reduced, licensed, and infringed. I am here not only for my rights, but the rights of my children, your children, and generations that have not been born yet. Stand with us. Stand with Sheriff Lewis. Stand in support of making Wycomico County a sanctuary for the Second Amendment. I don't have to tell you about how the voice of the people of the Eastern Shore continually falls upon deaf ears in Annapolis. I do not have to tell you about how the lifestyle and culture of the Eastern Shore is ignored when the legislators in Annapolis craft their bills. I don't have to tell you about how the entirety of the state is made to suffer for the sins of Baltimore. We, the people, are in need of our locally-elected officials to add their voices to our own in support of our natural right to keep and bear arms. The message to Annapolis needs to be strengthened. It needs to be clear. Wycomico County recognizes the inalienable rights of people of all races, religions, and persuasions to keep and bear arms. Please support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Good evening, council members. My name is Daniel Bruce. I've been a lifelong resident of Wycomico County, except for a few years of when I was in the Army. You've been listening to facts, figures, and personal anecdotes from the past few minutes, and I think in my mind, it all boils down to one simple fact, the God-given right of every individual to protect themselves, their family, and their property from harm and from destruction. The Second Amendment was not, did not give us our rights. The Second Amendment was written by our founding fathers to keep the government from infringing on our God-given rights. We're hoping that you'll sign this resolution to show the citizens of this county that you agree with that, and that you are behind them and support them in wanting to defend themselves and their property and their families, especially in today's trying times. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next.
My name is Randy Morris. I'm a voting resident of Wycomico County. As I said before, Mr. Dodd, Ms. Cannon, Ms. McCain, you're my elected members of this council. I am urging you to show your support of our rights by passing the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution. I'm also the founder of a Facebook group, Wycomico County, Maryland for Second Amendment Sanctuary, which has almost 2,000 Wycomico residents that I am also representing here today. Moms' Man Action recently gave out some false information that stated firearms are the number-one cause of death and injury for kids. The facts are that car accidents are the number-one cause of death and injury for kids. I gave Ms. Hurley the data, which is from National Academy of Science. It also has on there showing the protective effects of gun ownerships. Moms' Man Action has an agenda to take away rights as they push for the Australian model of gun control, which has progressively eliminated firearm ownership in Australia, except for the very elite who can still afford to have them. Moms' Man Action is largely funded through Bloomberg and other out-of-touch elitist billionaires. Please do not cave to those that speak for them, but listen to your county residents who have been emailing you and speaking for themselves and other county residents, as I have been and am doing now. I have been told Annapolis is paying attention to what is happening down here, and so is our surrounding counties. I'm asking you to bring this back up, bring it to a vote, and pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
May I also say something else real quick?
Go ahead.
Please support our law enforcement and correctional officers and 911 dispatchers through your decisions here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Crawford. I'm a resident of Wycomico County, and I've been listening to all the different facts and figures, and people have been articulating how they feel about the gun laws and so on, and which I personally agree with the resolution. But I thought I'd add some context to this. I grew up in New York, in New York City, in Queens. My wife grew up in Brooklyn, and we're down in Salisbury for 35 years, so I can see both sides of it. The harsh reality is, in New York, they have 40,000 cops. So, if you call, if you call 911, if you have somebody breaking into your house, you have an issue where you really need some protection quickly, there's a very good chance that you're going to get a cop on the scene within three, four minutes, and that's not an exaggeration. Down here, we obviously don't have 40,000 cops rolling around. I will tell you this, I'm very happy and very supportive of the local law enforcement down here, but the harsh reality is, we are in a rural area, and a rural area is going to take you, it could very easily take you 10 minutes before you get somebody on scene, and that's not a knock against the law enforcement people. That's just the harsh reality and how spread out we are. And I want to be able to protect my family. It's just that simple. And the extra few minutes that having a weapon in my, in my house affords me, while we've already called 911, we're waiting for the law enforcement people to get there, it's life and death, as far as I'm concerned. And I really would like to see the, the idea that people who are in a metropolitan area, as opposed to people in a rural area, the metropolitan area people are basically, the urban people, are trying to pass laws to affect our gun ownership, and I think it's ridiculous. They just don't know. Frankly, I didn't know the difference when I came down here. Came down with Drummond, like I said, 35 years ago. I was clueless when it came to, when it came to the difference of how people look at and what the, what the restrictions were going to be. I become a gun-over, and I, a very legal gun-over, I make sure I lock everything up and so on and so forth, but I want to maintain the ability to be able to protect my family. And I just thought the context would be, would be kind of interesting when you take in all the comments from all the other people, which I support, so I wish you would have passed the resolution.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lee Robertson. I'm a full-time resident and a registered voter in Wycomico County. I am again stating my response for passing of the Second Amendment Resolution that is before the council at this time. I hope each and every council member has had a chance to read and put some serious thought in the email I sent to each of you. There has to be a problem with 21 out of 23 counties in Maryland either passing or in the process to pass this type of resolution. We must not water down this resolution so much that it will not be productive to all of us. With the support of all the other counties, the council should not have to worry about any legal issues arising from the passing of this resolution. As I stated in my email to each of you, going to Annapolis or fighting a law in court would take time, but more importantly, money, which residents of this county do not have. You must realize that money talks, and usually, the ones with the most money usually win. How many of you have the time and money to put up a almost unwinnable fight in the court system? Other than references to Second Amendment cases, all others are irrelevant. This resolution is only pertaining to our Second Amendment rights afforded to us by the Constitution of the United States. We are losing more and more of them each year by forces which we cannot control. Usually, the majority rules, but in many cases, they do not. I hope that each member of the council can see the importance of what we are trying to achieve, and will give serious thought as to the importance... achieve and will give serious thought as to the importance of what we can lose if this resolution is not passed. I hope you can come to an agreement on the wording of the resolutions with any amendments you believe necessary. I, along with many other Wycomico County residents, feel this resolution is necessary to protect our Second Amendment rights that we are losing every year. I urge you to pass this resolution without further delay and hope that whatever your decision will make all of us rest easier every night. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next.
Good evening, council members. My name is Virginia Crawford, and I moved down here with my husband 35 years ago. As we said, we grew up in the city, and as a woman in the city, you had to take courses to be safe. And the first thing the police officers told us in the safety course was the worst criminal you could ever run into is someone who will break into a home when the people are there. In a rural area, I did not feel safe, and so I am happy to say that I am a legal gun owner, but I ask you to protect my rights, and I wish you would vote for this amendment because we need to be safe and we need to have our rights protected. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. My name is Dave Cooper. I'm a father, a husband, a business owner, a firefighter, and a registered voter in District Four. I just wanted to bring to light a few simple facts. There are 30,000 deaths per year by gun violence, but is violence the right terms to use? Let's break down those 30,000 deaths real quick. 65% of those are by suicide. Gun laws probably wouldn't prevent those. 15% are by law enforcement in the line of duty and justified. 17% are due to criminal activity, gang and drug-related, or mental illness. That is your gun violence. 3% are accidental discharges. So let's take that 30,000, that 30,000 annual number and actually figure out what the real number is. It's only 5,100. Let's break that down real quick. Across the U.S., 480 homicides were in Chicago. That's 9.5%. 344 homicides were in Baltimore. That's 6.5%. 333 homicides were in Detroit. That's another 6.5%. 119 homicides were in D.C. So now we've figured out 25% of that 5,000 was in four cities, not this county. So this leaves 3,825 deaths nationwide left over. 1,169 of them were in California. So now amongst the other 49 states, we're under 2,000, or slightly over 2,000, I'm sorry. So who has the strictest gun laws? Chicago, D.C., Baltimore, Detroit, the state of California, all the ones with the highest death rates, the highest crime rates, because it's not the gun that is killing the people that is causing the crime, that is causing the violence. It is the actual increased crime rate in each one of those areas. So let's talk about crime rate briefly. I was going to submit this, but then I realized there was some personal information about me on here that I didn't want on here, AKA my address and some other stuff. In the past 10 years, I've had Wycomico County Sheriff's Department at my house in excess of 35 times between burglaries, theft, vandalism, and trespassing. Okay? This is in our county. We need to have a way to defend ourselves. I petition this council to make Wycomico County, Maryland a Second Amendment Sanctuary. The infringements of the Second Amendment in need of resistance include, but not are limited to, high-capacity magazine bans, weapon bans, or limitations, red flag laws, and other limitations or restrictions to constitutional rights of the people. Local government, I understand, you cannot always go against state government. I understand you cannot always go against the federal government, but this statement of making us a sanctuary shows that this county does not want that. Once our county proceeds, you guys know, we've all been here for a very long period of time, there are other counties that are watching us that follow suit with Wycomico County. I'm tired of Montgomery County and PG County running this state. If we move forward, there are going to be others that move forward. Right now, there are 320 county, cities, and townships throughout 19 states that have declared themselves Second Amendment sanctuaries. I feel as though it is your duty and responsibility as the people, the electors of power, to demand the rights of our forefathers granted be protected. I ask that you vote to make this county a sanctuary county. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Next time we do this, how about putting one of these over here?
Okay.
Would you like one, Mary? Would you like one now?
No, I'm, I'm fine, but it's best practice.
Maybe after a couple of speakers or something, I'll grab that.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Mary Ashanti, and I'm president of Wycomico County NAACP. We asked the Ace of American Civil Liberties Union to advise us on this Second Amendment. So this is reference to the proposed resolution declaring Wycomico County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. Dear County Council of Wycomico, the ACLU of Maryland writes with extreme concern regarding the proposed resolution to declare Wycomico County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. The ACLU of Maryland was founded in 1931 in response to racism, vigilante autism, and lynching on the eastern shore. The organization's first case was on behalf of a black man named Orphel Jones, who was charged with murder, denied counsel, and threatened with lynching. In fact, Orphel Jones' case was transferred to the city of Towson in part due to mob violence and the recent lynching of 23-year-old Matthew Williams that had occurred in Salisbury. The harm caused by racism, lynching, and mob justice in Wycomico County is not far behind us and endures today. Just a few months ago, in February, racist graffiti was found scrawled across academic buildings at Somerset, I mean, excuse me, at Salisbury University, threatening black students with lynching. The same month, racist slurs were found etched in the entrance of a bathroom in a Wycomico County resident, restaurant. Black people across the nation continue to be killed by armed vigilantes. Ahmaud Arbery was gunned down in February by two armed men in Georgia. In July of 2015, a white supremacist vigilante opened fire in a Bible study group at Emmanuel AME Church in Charleston, South Carolina, murdering nine black parishioners, including the senior pastor, Clemente C. Pinkin. And in 2012, young Trayvon Martin was gunned down by an armed man in Florida. Countless black men and women have been killed by vigilantes in the years between. At this point in our nation's history, leaders should do everything in their power to stop the killing of black people and support communities in healing from racism. This resolution does exactly the opposite. It may not be explicitly stated in the text of the resolution, but the plain reality and spirit of the resolution is clear. It is an invitation for a return to armed vigilanteism at the expense of black lives and livelihood. It is a request that, it is a request that the Wycomico County Government endures fear akin to putting up a Confederate flag at the county line. This is not a colorblind proposal. Finally, we would be remiss to not address the fact that the proposed resolution would carry no impact on the current law. For example, nothing in the current law prevents agents of the Wycomico Government from advocating their position on any issue in the Maryland General Assembly. Demonstrating this point, Wycomico County Sheriff Mike Lewis already does exactly this year after year. He travels to Annapolis reminding elected officials his refusal to comply with state laws regarding public safety. For these reasons, the ACLU of Maryland respectfully urges an unfavorable report on the proposed resolution. Thank you for your consideration. Dana Vickers Shelley, Executive Director. In the NAACP, we support legal gun ownership, and we support the rights of the Second Amendment. And we believe that the state of Maryland protects those rights. And I want to remind each of you, the elected officials, all the elected officials of Maryland, when you take an oath, go back and read what you swear. I believe you swear to uphold the laws of Maryland. Not change them when you don't like what the General Assembly does. This is not how it's done. There's a process. Black folks are concerned the message that they're passing this Second Amendment Resolution will send. We have other parts of the country like, that was used for Trayvon Martin, stand your Where, where supposedly a citizen decided that he needed to take the law in his own hands, we do not want to stand your ground in Wycomico County. We are already experiencing problems in this county already, with complaints about how the, the sheriff's department and the, and the city police treat our, our people. So we are hoping that you uphold the oath that you took, that you took, and uphold the laws of the state of Maryland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashanti. Next.
I always learn lots of things at council meetings, so get used to seeing me in the back corner, like the back pew.
You're welcome.
Jamie Dyke, State's Attorney, Wycomico County. I'm here tonight simply to be educated, number one, but number two, to thank you. Thank each of you for your support, your recognition of the need for the Prosecution Integrity Unit, that you have voted to fund us. It recognizes the need for restoring confidence in public safety, in law enforcement, and in our community generally, at a time, especially now. It's fitting probably that I follow Ms. Ashanti in the respect that I have spent a career fighting against abuses of power and help righting wrongs. And ladies and gentlemen, lady and gentlemen of the council, you've helped us take a large step forward that way with voting to fund the Prosecution Integrity Unit, so I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyke. Next.
Josh, can you bring it up there? We're going to try to wipe down for our COVID policy. Thank you. Hopefully they'll see it. No problem. Thank you.
Wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm Evan Avnan. I'm a prior Salisbury City Police Officer for three years. I was also a Wycomico County Sheriff's Deputy for about seven years. I also worked with Ocean City as a seasonal police officer. I was in Somerset for a brief time at the sheriff's office, and I worked at the Department of State as diplomatic security service. I've been through SWAT school. I'm a certified less-than-lethal instructor. I'm a protective detail specialist, certified in that, certified to run a protective detail. Additionally, I've been a firearms instructor for about the past 10 years now and have owned two security and investigation agencies in the state of Maryland licensed by the state police, including one I own now, U.S. Task. Part of my job is to train people on how to use firearms safely in their homes and applications and use of handguns if they're seeking handgun permit in the state of Maryland, Florida, and Delaware. Moreover, I have 20 years' experience running security agencies, providing security and safety for persons and property here in Wycomico County, Worcester County, Ocean City, Baltimore, Montgomery County with armed personnel. I have approximately 70 persons working for me regularly, with about 25 of them being armed, and I'm acutely aware of liability. Having said all this, I watched the previous Wycomico County Council meeting about the Second Amendment, had some basic concerns. Seemed to be a lot of talk about hunting, who hunters are, about, in reference to Second Amendment. The Second Amendment, which was penned by some obviously very intelligent people, was designed to promote the populace, or rather, protect the populace from tyrannical government. The framers of the Constitution knew that the government is more powerful than them, or was more powerful than them at the time, the individual who is unarmed and is at risk of being subject to armed government rule. Absolute power corrupts absolutely. The framers knew this because they themselves were victims of a tyrannical government. This is why there's so many precautions under the Bill of Rights. Bill of Rights is expressly to protect citizens from the government. It is very difficult to protect one's rights from a tyrannical government without being armed. People think that a tyrannical government will never happen in America. My mom is from the Czech Republic, which was first Democratic and then fell under Nazi rule and then communist rule. Fortunately, she was able to escape, but not before her home was appropriated under, by the government under communism. Secondly, personal security is paramount. Personal security is paramount in everyone's life. Under Maslow's hierarchy of needs, security is number two, second only to air, water, shelter, and food. I can tell you from years in being in law enforcement and security that police will not protect you from crime. The police are a reactive force that is a general deterrent of committing crime, however, they are entirely reactive in nature. When a crime is committed, they respond, hopefully in time to intercede if the crime is in progress. However, most of the time, the police respond after the crime has occurred in order to investigate and possibly charge someone at a later time. One of the main issues is that a typical police response in a county can take up to 30 minutes, even in an emergency. There have been many, many times where I worked for policing agencies where we were routinely short in staffing. Sometimes we had four people for the entire city or county. If you have one officer on arrest, one across the county on a DUI arrest, one at the station performing paperwork, you may only have one officer initially responding to an emergency call for service. If that officer or deputy is in Willards and there's an emergency taking place in Mardella, his or her response time is about 20 minutes, running lights and sirens. We used to have a saying, "One riot, one ranger." That meant if you were short on patrol, the patrolling officer would have to respond to an emergency, and you better hold what you got before backup gets there. As a police officer, there were times where I had to wait 20 minutes for a backup on a traffic stop or to search a house after a burglary. So what I'm telling you is that sometimes, thankfully in rare situations, lethal force is required to defend your life from an aggressive attack. Criminals do not care about safe gun zones or carry permits. They could care less. They are criminals. The mere existence of laws... The mere existence of laws does not dissuade the aggressive criminal from rape, robbery, burglary, or murder. If you are home at 3:00 a.m. and you hear someone breaking into your house, coming down the hallway with a gun or knife towards you, or your significant other or child, the police is a long phone call away. This is why it's very important to support the Second Amendment at all costs. Number one, to ensure the freedom of persons against tyranny. And number two, to have a basic security from criminals. To me, this is not a race issue. This is not a political issue. This is a basic safety and security individual issue for everybody. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Next.
Mr. Dodd, would you think that we might want to, as a matter of time, to allow the mayor, Mapley, to do his presentation, to delay that?
We've already got one that's... You did take care of that, didn't you?
Yeah, we reached out to him, and we're just going to postpone that work session.
All right, I'd like to remind everyone that we're trying to limit these to three minutes. It's after nine o'clock, and we've got a lot of comments to read, so don't be redundant, please. I know it's hard when you get talking. You guys do a good job speaking, but try to limit to three minutes or less, and thank you.
Can I add to that? If you emailed the comment, if you can let me know so I don't read it again into the record.
Exactly. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Robert Jeanette III. I was born in Wycomico County, and I've been raised here my entire life. I love this area and this county. Unfortunately, I do not see myself continuing to live in this county unless my rights are protected locally. The reason for this is that I can no longer live in a state that refuses to recognize my rights as a free man. Maryland has passed some of the most restrictive gun laws in this country and has many more proposed, taking away my access to the best equipment to defend myself. The state has made it almost impossible to get a concealed carry permit. In order to get one in this state, you have to provide a good and substantial reason. Who is best to decide if my reason is good or substantial? Me, the individual who is trying to protect myself and my family, or someone sitting in an office miles away? This state has decided that the people who pay, or who live in it and pay taxes are not capable of making these decisions. What is worse is that the state legislator, which is dominated by the more populated areas, dictate what people in rural communities do. It doesn't take a genius to look outside and realize that the people of this county have a different way of life than the people who live in Prince's, Georgia's County or Baltimore County. I urge you to follow the lead of many other rural counties in this state, including Carroll, Allegheny, Hartford, and Cecil, in the passing of the Second Amendment Resolution. If you choose to not pass this resolution and the laws that are proposed pass, you will be actively turning your back on the citizens of this county. To quote John Adams, "Liberty once lost is lost forever." Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for listening to what I have to say. I would also like to thank Sheriff Mike Lewis and the members of the council who have been vocal in this. Also, I did send an email earlier that I've said it here, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Good evening, council members and neighbors. My name is Kristen Douglas, and I am a resident of Wycomico County who benefits from our library. I am a parent with a background in education who understands that reading is an important life skill that enriches our lives. My children have enjoyed the library's summer reading program and special guest presentations. The library staff are helpful, and they do a lot to encourage literacy. As of late, our library has been considering a different kind of program. A Drag Queen Story Hour for Children has an underlying motive separate from literacy. In this case, literacy is being used as a vehicle to expose children to a political and cultural agenda. In their own words, dragqueensstoryhour.org says, "Drag queens story hour captures the imagination and play of the gender fluidity of childhood and gives kids glamorous, positive, and unabashedly queer role models. In spaces like this, kids are able to see people who defy rigid gender restrictions." The American Library Association links to this page as well. "To even consider playing host to an event like this, you must first accept that gender is fluid in childhood and that drag queens are indeed desirable role models. I'm not here to argue differing views on this, but I am here to recognize that these statements announce an agenda loud and clear, and we need to see that agenda for what it is." The Drag Queen Story Hour website goes on to announce a commitment to creating diverse, accessible, and safe spaces. This is, this agenda is driven and uses words like diversity to gain access to children with the goal of having them grow to also reject those who would hold to the view of gender norms. The truth is that this disagreement is not hatred, and trying to discredit anyone who disagrees with you is nothing more than bullying. At the risk of being on the receiving end of such speech from those who insist on misinterpreting my actions, I'm standing here because I want my voice to be heard. I'm calling attention to the fact that this is an agenda-driven program that undermines the values of many in our community. Disagreeing with the Drag Queen Story Hour in a library is not a request for censorship. It's true that folks can choose not to attend. However, it would be unjust to use taxpayer money to fund a library system that is hosting a divisive program. More than ever, our community needs unity. Literacy can be used to bring us together. Our library should not allow itself to be the pawn of a bully pulpit agenda. Understand that this is bullying, drag queens and their advocates crying diversity to gain acceptance and confuse little ones on their gender. Their purpose alone is to lead children to affirm that gender is fluid and not biological. I tell my children that truth is not relative. I'm teaching them to be thinkers, not blown around by feelings or popular thought. Some of my neighbors and maybe some of you disagree with where I stand. I respect that. I welcome civil conversation because I understand that our disagreement isn't cause for hate. Council members, please give no funds to our library if they insist on picking sides with a political agenda. Words and literacy are powerful, and they owe it to us all to use our resources well and not betray our trust. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Council lady and councilman, I wrote this earlier in preparation for today. As I am writing this...
Excuse me. Can you give your name and where you live?
Jennifer Gleason. I am writing this. I'm sitting here, listening to the voices of our four sweet children outside, playing barefoot in the grass, high shrills when they find a new bug, laughter from playing tag, and grumpy grumblings and working through arguments, and all with a sense of innocence and wonder at our great big world. Our great big world, which currently is under the strain of pain, which is too heavy of a burden for them to bear at their age. At the same time, it is coming at them as fast as a fire hydrant, so they have to pick up pebbles of what they see and know and place what they can handle in their backpacks of emotions. Hopefully, but not always, with parents who have the best interest at heart. Race relations, the destruction of their hometown stores, and a pandemic where the government has deemed their friends and relatives unsafe to hug or even give a smile to are some of the rocks we as parents are having to chisel down to fit into the backpacks of emotions. All generations have had to fit rocks that are too big into their children's backpacks as we have, as we live in a fallen and broken world. In 2014, The Huffington Post wrote an article titled "Sexualized Culture and Creating Mental Health Issues in Our Youth." In this article, it stated that the American Psychological Association released a report called "The Sexualization of Girls." They made a case that the onslaught of sexual images in media and pop culture has created a mental health crisis, evidenced by the increased levels of depression, low self-esteem, and eating disorders in young girls. They go on to state the alarming statistics. Ninety-five percent of those with eating disorders are between ages 12 and 25. Women are much more likely than men to develop an eating disorder. Only an estimated 5% to 15% of people with anorexia or bulimia are male. Apparently, approximately 91% of women are unhappy with their bodies and resort to dieting to achieve their ideal body shape. The way in which women are commonly portrayed in music videos, films, and advertising is not just disrespectful, it's sexist, it's at the root of a mental health crisis. Not my words, Huffington Post. Drag queens. What is a drag queen? On March 17th, at the Wycomico County Council Legislative Session, Dr. Finch, a member of the library board of trustees, defined two words during her address. She defined lingerie from the Merriam-Webster dictionary and purposely pivoted to the Oxford Dictionary to define drag queen. What caused her shift? Is there something to hide? Would the definition be deemed honorable when paired with a story hour for children? Let's find out. When looking up drag queen in the Merriam-Webster dictionary, it is defined as, Dr. Finch, "usually a gay man who dresses as a woman and performs as an entertainer especially to caricature stereotypically vampish women." Let's break down the word vampish for the same dictionary source, same one. "A woman who uses her charm or wiles to seduce and exploit men. For a man to dress as a woman and portray my gender as vampish is degrading." From The Huffington Post again, "The way in which women are commonly portrayed in music videos, films, and advertising is not just disrespectful and sexist, it is at the root of a mental health crisis." Is the Wycomico County Council going to add Wycomico County Library to the above list as a source for degrading women? And contributing to the mental health crisis amongst our youth by funding them? Dr. Finch also used the American Library Association as her, the ALA, as her reference for her entire, for her entire address. The American Library Association lobbies for and supports the agenda of one clear political ideology. We found it interesting that Dr. Finch used the ALA as her only reference in her address. Wycomico County Library Director Ashley Teagle stated that the Wycomico County libraries are not members of the ALA, which was in agreement with her budget request. Even if we were members of the ALA, then why do we need to follow their guidelines? Wycomico County Library, the Pittsville and Downtown Branch have had a Drag Queen Story Hour on their calendar. It was there. We have photos. It has since been taken down. 1.5 million Wycomico County taxpayer dollars go to fund the library, and which we love. This is not about LGBTQ, heterosexual, homosexual, bisexual. This is about what is appropriate versus what is inappropriate for children. Boulders not fitting into their backpacks. This is about whether Wycomico County Council is willing to support and fund over-sexualizing children with our taxpayer dollars. One little insert before. "We are happy to see our tax dollars go to hard-working employees who work with the community's best interests in mind, but we must never stand idle when our tax dollars are used to push biased, over-sexualized agendas." I leave you with this. Will those taxpayer dollars go to fund the degrading of women? Will it go to give children boulders they cannot fit into their emotional backpacks? Will it go to over-sexualizing our youth? Will the Wycomico County Library be deemed, in our community, and known in our community, hashtag unsafe for children, Wycomico County Library? Will that be known in our community? It could go viral. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. Again, a reminder, it should be less than three minutes, especially if you're reading.
You need to remind them, they don't have a watch.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Teagle, and I am a Wycomico County resident and the Executive Director of Wycomico Public Libraries. I would like to turn your attention to the First Amendment, which states, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for or address of grievances." When we talk about what contributes to a better society, we have to talk about the public library. The public library offers free internet, free books, and free educational programs. These lifelong learning opportunities are not offered with the intent of the library taking a political stance. Instead, our role is to make information available to our citizens so that they can make their own informed decisions. In a public library, there is space for everyone and for all sorts of opinions. The American Library Association Bill of Rights asserts, "Libraries should challenge censorship and the fulfillment of their responsibility to provide information and enlightenment." Recently, the public library came under fire for following our publicly posted program policy with plans to host a Drag Queen Storytime, which I will also add was a community request. A private threat was made to me regarding library funding. This was followed up by a local blog allowing commenters to call library staff names and a call for me to be removed from my position as the library's director. Library staff felt threatened. Local citizens threatened to contact elected officials and have funding withheld from the public library if we proceeded with the program. Ultimately, the program did not happen and is not scheduled to happen in the future. I will repeat, ultimately, the program did not happen and is not scheduled to happen in the future. The public library was bullied into suppressing the information needs of our LGBTQ plus citizens. I contacted the American Library Association's Office of Intellectual Freedom just to see what other kind of challenges were coming up in our public libraries. In Connecticut, Arabic classes for children and teens were challenged because a patron felt Arabic classes were a way to indoctrinate children and to radical Islam, and the library should not be hosting them. In Ohio, a library hosted a Climate Change Action Day. A patron there didn't want the library used as a place for political activism and objected to their tax dollars being used to fight climate change. In New Jersey, a public library canceled a showing of the teen film Love Simon about a gay teenager. The library director there canceled the program because she was worried about patron complaints and political ramifications with City Hall. In Florida, a showing of the documentary Who's Streets about the killing of Michael Brown was challenged. The retired school principal who made the complaint said the one-sided portrayal could lead to local violence and could trigger anti-police violence. In Illinois, during a global read-aloud day for eighth graders, the principal ordered students to stop reading the book The Marrow Thieves and removed all copies from the library. I do think it's important that our county council is aware, public libraries are becoming at the center of legal action, unfortunately, as a result of some of these challenges. Because all of our citizens in our community have the right to come to their public library administration and make requests, which is how we handle things here in Wycomico County. I would also like to add and remind citizens that the public library, while we receive state and county funding, we are an autonomous organization, and that is to protect people's First Amendment right to unrestricted access to information. And this is critical. So in all of the concern about the Drag Queen Storytime, after people talked to me, there were no requests, no concerns directly expressed to our governing board of trustees, who, I will add, can be contacted via email through our website. Our mission is to innovate, educate, and inspire. Public libraries should not be restricted to providing information that is pre-approved. Public libraries are important spaces for public dialogue about a variety of topics. If we allow our community to only allow materials and resources that are pre-approved, we run the risk of having a biased public information resource that only shows one point of view. Public libraries are imperative to communities that engage in healthy dialogue. Public libraries are critical to communities that value equity, diversity, and inclusion. There is a difference between respectfully voicing your opinion through appropriate channels, such as the library's administration and board of trustees, and politicizing the public library to meet a personal objective. Public libraries are by design neutral organizations, so even if we proceed with Drag Queen Storytime, that does not imply the library is taking any political side. So, if our customers made a request... So if our customers made a request for us to host a different type of program, we would go through that same vetting process that we did with the drag queen storytime. So who decides what information is appropriate for a public library to offer? That authority should rest with your public librarians who have training on providing balanced resources and programs for the community. The public library has the power to improve the quality of life for every Wycomico County citizen by creating opportunities to bring diverse community members together to foster a deeper appreciation for and understanding of what makes us unique. Marginalized communities should not be further marginalized in public spaces such as our libraries. Instead, the public library should be a space that embraces all community members, and at Wycomico Public Library, we stand by our mission to be an inclusive, welcoming community resource that strives to meet the diverse needs of all Wycomico County citizens. If we in Wycomico County consider ourselves American citizens that uphold the values of our country, we will fight for all citizens' First Amendment right to unrestricted information in our libraries. In closing, I would like to share a quote from Paul McMasters, who said, "Most librarians view these assaults on their First Amendment traditions with deep concern. Anything of consequence in the care of libraries offends someone somewhere, of course. The challenge for public libraries is to find ways to remind political, educational, and moral leaders that to remove or restrict access to controversial material is to invite the ultimate suppression of all material." I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call or email.
Thank you, Ms. Teagle. Next.
Come here, I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
Hi, my name is Edward Holland. I'm a Wycomico County resident. I'm gonna be very brief. I just want to say thank you to Mr. McCain for the amendment to keep the 5% salary increase for the county employees. We, the county employees, and we, the citizens in Wycomico County, are very thankful for all you guys that voted for us, and just want to say God bless y'all, and thank you for showing that you care and love us. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, my name is Justin Trader. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. United States Marine, ten and a half years, former federal police officer. I can't believe I got to come to a podium to ask for Wycomico County to be a, to a supporter, to support our Constitution. Our Constitution, our Second Amendment is there to protect all the other amendments, and our stance should already be to support the Constitution. They also, you should think about the person who is laying in their bed and they have thirty seconds to react to a threat coming into their house. That shouldn't be a question of why should they just lay there and let it happen? Or should they be able to do what needs to be done to protect themselves? Wycomico County, we shouldn't need a resolution to stand for the Constitution and the Second Amendment. And thank you for the time to be up here, and thank you.
Thank you. Next. Is there anyone else out in the hall?
They're standing there.
Tell them to line up if they're gonna speak. If you're gonna speak, it's getting late, sir. Oh, they're electrical board? All right, well, they're coming up. Do we have any more commenters? Ms. Hurley.
We do have several comments that came in by email, so Lynn, Sandy, and I will be reading them. We'll alternate in reading them. I do want to mention that-
Would it be advantageous for us to see the electrical board before we read the rest of the public comments so those guys can go on?
I don't have a problem with that. How does the rest of the council feel?
That would mean you'd have to adjourn from the legislative session and go back into-
Then we have to go back in? All right. Thank you, Joe. I understand.
We do have two work sessions on the agenda that we're gonna postpone to hopefully the next meeting, and that's the work session for the land acquisition and the work session on the discussion for the roadmap to recovery.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. The board.
Okay, so the first public comment is from Charles Sims, and he says, "I am a resident of Wycomico County. I stand before you today to encourage you to pass the resolution to make Wycomico County a 2A designated sanctuary county. At this time, I'd like to talk about the opposition's letter announcing inclusions that are needed to the resolution. The first issue that was addressed by the opposition is the racial disparities and unfairness in the treatment of minority gun owners. They proceed to list three incidences that have occurred in other states, which has nothing to do with what we are working towards. While these tragedies are terrible and should not have cost these men their lives, this is not a 2A sanctuary issue. Instead, this issue is a law enforcement officer issue and learning appropriate de-escalation techniques. Since they decided to use shootings involving law enforcement, I looked at the fourth report to the state of Maryland, deaths involving a law enforcement officer, House Bill 954, Public Safety Article 3-507E, which is submitted by the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. This report is a requirement of law enforcement agencies to provide the Office of Crime Control and Prevention with information from the previous calendar year pertaining to officer-involved death and death in the line of duty that involved a law enforcement officer. This information includes the age, gender, ethnicity, and race of both the deceased and the officer involved. This also includes a brief description of the circumstances surrounding the death, including date, time, location, and what agency the officer is with. The report shows that there were thirty-one cases involving law enforcement. The statistics on deaths were broken down as suicides, homicides, accidents, natural causes, and overdoses. All who are deceased are males, aged eighteen to fifty-five years old. They were Hispanic, Black, Caucasian. Out of the thirty-one cases, fourteen were considered homicides, and twelve of those were gun-related homicides, with ten of them using a gun against the police and two assaulting officers. These deaths occurred in Anaronda County, Baltimore County, Montgomery County, French Georges County, Frederick County, and Baltimore City. While these shootings did occur in our state, they did not happen in our county, and there is no correlation with what we are trying to accomplish. The letter also stated that all three men were victims of the unfairness of gun laws in their respective area as well as to the continuing effects of white supremacy in America. The letter then quotes from a co-founder of the blank Panthers Party, Huey P. Newton, stating, "Sometimes, if you want to get rid of the guns, you have to pick up the gun," which suggests they intend to use violence or commit violence to persuade this council to disarm law-abiding citizens. Additionally, their statement suggests that this resolution promotes white supremacy and racial inequity, when instead, the resolution promotes equity for all, regardless of race, religion, or political views, by upholding the Second Amendment that was created to secure the rights of the people in this nation to be able to provide a common defense for themselves and their family. The letter also stated that there is no outcry to take people's guns. However, the current state of our society demands a place for everyone at the table to discuss matters of life and death. In response, since January of this year, thirty-four new gun bills introduced into legislation, with two being passed, twenty-five being reviewed, three withdrawn, three unfavorable, and one vetoed. To say that no one is trying to take people's guns is simply not true. The second issue that was brought up was the resolution's language and thinking it was currently anti-democracy and contrary to the rule of law.
Ms. Hurley, we actually did, I'm looking at my list, we did actually-
Hear it now.
Hear Mr. Sims, yeah.
From Mr. Sims, Charles Sims?
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll move on. Lynn, did you want to read the next one?
Yes, so next is Janice Murphy, and she says, "I'm a concerned resident of Wycomico County, and I would like to express my opposition to the proposed 2A sanctuary resolution. I am proud to be a citizen in Maryland where national gun legislation exists and frankly appalled at any effort by the lawmakers of our county to lessen their impact. Lots of background checks on all gun sales and red flag laws have been ruled constitutional in court over and over again. I ask you to vote against the proposed 2A sanctuary resolution. Please refrain from making my life less safe and consider helping our residents by being more functional in a pandemic by encouraging safe practices instead."
Next is, "My name is Tim Wertz. I live in Wycomico County. Dear council members, I'm writing you to please stand united to pass this resolution. It was brought up in the previous meeting that if we wanted to change the laws in Maryland, that we should go to Annapolis State House and plead our case. Well, let me say that many of us here go to Annapolis every year, and we do plead our case. But men in Annapolis already have an agenda, and year after year, we go, we plead. But year after year, our rights are eroded away, farther and farther each year. We are not asking for new laws, we have plenty of them now. We are only asking you to give us, the Wycomico County residents, a larger voice in Annapolis. We ask that you stand and help us tell Annapolis that we stand united in saying that we will not give up what is already the laws of the United States given to us in the Constitution. So I urge you to please pass this resolution. I leave you with this quote. "If violent crime is to be curbed, it is only the intended victim who can do it. The felon does not fear the police, and he does not fear the judge nor the jury. Therefore, what he must be taught is to fear his victim." And this is Lieutenant Colonel Jeff Cooper, U.S. M.C.
Okay, next is from Fred Peterson and Vicki Demos, and they say, "I am a concerned citizen in Wycomico County, Maryland, and I would like to voice my opposition to the proposed 2A sanctuary resolution. One hundred people die from gun violence every day in this country, and hundreds more are wounded. Additionally, firearms, not hits or accidents, are leading to deaths of children and teens in Maryland. Finally, gun violence is every bit an issue in rural areas like Wycomico County as it is in any other part of this great state. I ask you to vote against the proposed 2A sanctuary resolution."
Next is from Erin Suttelberg. "I'm not able to attend the council meeting in person on June 2nd. If time allows, here is part of my letter that I would like read at the meeting. I don't believe that the county council has a right to make or enforce gun laws, nor can we as a county interfere with state or federal laws around gun purchasing or ownership. I believe strongly in the safety of people and their right to life over the right to bear unregulated arms. That is, our state or county lawmakers have the right to write and pass legislation around gun ownership that regulates weapons and protects people. Therefore, I strongly disagree with Wycomico County becoming a so-called Second Amendment sanctuary. If the state of Maryland or the federal government takes a law that regulates guns for the safety of all citizens, I do not want to live in a county that will reject or violate that law. The personal health and safety of all citizens should come before unregulated rights of a person to own a gun. In fact, we need common sense gun law reform in this country, including gun ownership registries, bans on assault-style weapons, and more careful tracking of people purchasing weapons and ammunition. I have grown up in a world of mass shootings and daily gun violence, and I am tired of the gun lobby and the minority of individuals preventing us as a society from enacting simple measures that could save lives. I do not want to live in fear of being a casualty of a mass shooting by someone who lawfully obtained weapons designed for war. I hope that the county council will make the right decision to oppose the Second Amendment sanctuary resolution and instead focus on doing work for the people of Wycomico County that is within your jurisdiction and helps make our community safer for all people."
All right, the next one is from Susan Holt. She is the clerk of Wycomico River Friends and Scott Duncan, who is a member of Peace in the Park Organizing Committee. And they say, "We have been charged by members of the Wycomico River Friends meeting, Quakers, with writing to you to express our collective opposition to the resolution establishing Wycomico County as a Second Amendment sanctuary. Our reasons are many and varied, but all spring from an abiding interest in peaceful coexistence and concern for unity in our community. We believe even a symbolic gesture of support for gun rights is a dangerous distraction from the issues the county council has the authority and obligation to address. During this time of great anxiety over health and economic stresses, we feel the community is better served if its officials focus on practical ways we can function better as a community, particularly given the magnitude and severity of current citizen unrest around the country. We hope the council will work proactively with state, county, and municipal law enforcement agencies to serve their communities, opening up lines of communication and dialogue so all citizens feel both safe and that their concerns are taken seriously. Further, let us direct our energies towards support of local workers at risk, endangered businesses, and those individuals whose health and welfare have been severely damaged by the COVID-19 pandemic. Please continue to work to protect and encourage the development of a safe, inclusive, and strong Wycomico County. We respectfully ask for a vote against the proposed resolution."
Next is from Jerome A. Miller. "I beg each member of the council to look into your own heart, to look into the eyes of the children in your neighborhood, to look into the eyes of African-American and Hispanic teenagers in this county, to look into the faces of all the vulnerable who live here, and then to ask yourself if it really, is it really wise, really morally praiseworthy, really morally, economically, spiritually helpful to officially announce to the world that the duly-elected officials of this county are not going to follow the laws of the state that they have been elected to uphold?"
All right, next is from Linda Bystrak of Salisbury. "Maryland has a gun violence problem, and it is supported by the data. On May 17th, the data compiled for 2019 was by the Gun Violence Archive was released. In 2019, Maryland had 1,043 people injured by firearms, leading to 483 deaths. Eleven children aged zero to eleven and eighty-five teens aged 12 to 17 were injured or killed by firearms. Six police officers were killed or injured, and twenty people were killed by a police officer. Seven deaths were by suicide. I ask you to vote against the proposed 2A sanctuary resolution and instead focus on the health and well-being of Wycomico County."
Next is from Elizabeth Henry of Salisbury, Maryland. "At this moment in America, with fear, frustration, and despair at a fever pitch across the country, I believe it would be unwise for the county council to father add to tensions here in our own community. For heaven's sake, there is no one on the council who does not support the Constitution of the United States. I don't think we need to formalize that commitment in a way that is indiscernary. The resolution is redundant, and the specter of assault rifles does not protect the citizens of our county."
All right, next is from Beth Wolf. She's a Wycomico County resident. "I am writing to object to Sheriff Lewis's gun sanctuary proposal in Wycomico County. There is no reason that law-abiding people that wish to own guns should not have to comply with such reasonable precautions, such as background checks, and be banned from owning assault weapons. Please add me to the list of concerned citizens who oppose this proposal. If people do not agree with Maryland law, let them petition in Annapolis."
Next is from John Santos. "Hi, my name is John Santos. I support our gun rights. The Second Amendment was made for the citizens of our country. If our government has become oppressive, we, the people, could defend ourselves from oppressive government. What we're seeing in Maryland is playing out across the country, and we need to stand up for our gun rights." up for our gun rights. This just doesn't affect us, it affects everyone, and we need y'all to stand up for us and let Annapolis lawmakers know that you don't allocate, we won't allocate any money, facilities, sheriffs, nothing to infringe on your rights. It clearly states in our Constitution that when government becomes destructive to these ends, meaning that they become oppressive, that we, the citizens, have a right and duty to remove that government from its right to govern. I support a resolution to make Wycomico County, Maryland, a Second Amendment sanctuary county for all law-abiding citizens and gun owners. Thank you."
All right, next is from Frankie and Frank Shipper. "The purpose of this letter is to go on record as two of your constituents in opposition to the council taking any action that associates Wycomico County in any way with supporting the Second Amendment sanctuary movement. We are proud that Maryland is ranked as one of the top 10 states in the strength of its gun laws, and by no coincidence, in the bottom quartile as far as gun deaths per capita. If the reporting of Sheriff Lewis's resolution is accurate, we find it appalling and alarming that he would suggest that the council support not enforcing or following any gun laws that are passed. A positive that has come out of the sheriff's resolution is that it has caused us to educate ourselves on the Second Amendment sanctuary movement. On its face, it purports to preserve the right to keep and bear arms, but as the late conservative justice Antoine Scalia, who wrote for the Supreme Court in the Heller case that disallowed handgun bans in D.C., wrote, "Like most rights, the right secured by the Second Amendment is not unlimited. It is not a right to keep and carry any weapon whatsoever in any manner whatsoever and for whatever purpose," end quote. In that case, and the McDonald case in Chicago, the Supreme Court reiterated that a wide variety of gun laws are constitutionally sound, including but not limited to those dealing with background checks, assault weapon bans, restrictions on large-capacity magazines, and waiting periods. And so, all of us, including our sheriff, can rest easy knowing that we have a constitutionally designated body charged with discerning the constitutionality of our laws, even if sometimes we disagree. Furthermore, as Councilman McCain has pointed out, we have a state legislator for making laws, and any problems the county or others have, have, should be taken to that body for any changes. As to the sheriff's contention that this resolution be recognized as, quote, "ceremonial and largely symbolic," end quote, we ask, "Symbolic of what?" We were shocked to read that this Second Amendment sanctuary movement is primarily supported by a group of constitutional sheriffs who proclaim they won't enforce the gun laws, among others, that they don't agree with, based on a legal theory dating to the post-commitees formed in the 1970s by former Klan members in response to the belief that white people's rights had not been protected adequately during the civil rights era. That movement died out in the 1980s, with several of its leaders jailed or killed by law enforcement in shootouts. The posse promoted county sheriffs as the only legislative law enforcement to stand up to laws, especially federal, that they deem unconstitutional. Today's apparent inheritor of this movement is led by the Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association. From their website, they say, the sheriff, this is from their website, "The sheriff is the chief law enforcement officer of his or her county. As an elected official here, she is the ultimate protector of the people, providing a check and balance locally for any state or federal agency that may infringe the constitutional rights of the people," end quote. We hope you find that that as chilling as we do, and that our sheriff is not a member of this organization. So again, we ask, this resolution would be symbolic of what? Surely, we do not want our county associated with this movement and its tragic historical inspiration. Please vote no on Second Amendment sanctuary in whatever form it comes to you."
Mr. President, if I may, I would like to consider a motion, if we could, to adjourn from legislative session, to go into an open work session. We could always have the work session with the electrical board, and then after such, we could then reconvene in legislative session to finish this.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye.
Thank you. So we're now a closed session. I mean, we're now an open session.
We're an open session. So... Ms. Hold on a second. Ms. Hurley, do I have to read this statement about going into closed session and...
You do after we go back into the legislative session and adjourn again.
Okay, and we'll have to vote to go back into, uh...
Yes.
Yeah, open session?
The legislative session.
Legislative. Thank you. Okay, go ahead. Can you all come up to the table?
I think we can have two, two of them.
Yeah, just two at a time. And then the other two can get closer in those seats, just in case you need to speak.
Mr. President, can we have Pac-14 change the tape real quick?
Already? Okay, two minutes. Just go ahead and get comfortable. We gotta change the tape. About every two hours, we have to change the tape. And you see what time it is.